And Bob, if you will keep an eye out for Lynn, she may or may not be able to join us. She's joining us from a distant location. She may have internet, she may not.
Yes ma'am.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Sally Brownfield with us.
She is, I see.
I'm here.
Hi Sally.
Hi.
Alrighty, at this time it is six o'clock. We can go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Have a flag for our screen.
Alright.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Which it stands.
Stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And justice for all. Alright.
Thank you all very much. Welcome to the Board Meeting of October 13th. It's a regular school board meeting. And appreciate you being here. All I can say is I'm glad we didn't have to go out and drive in that wind and rain today or tonight. So it's a good night to be in a Zoom meeting. Have members of the Board had a chance to review the agenda.
Yes.
And do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I will move that we adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting, October 13th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Seeing none. We will call for the vote, all in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
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 Alrighty. We have an agenda for the evening, thank you very much. At this time we come to the portion of the meeting dedicated to community comments. School Board meetings are streamed live via YouTube every second and fourth Tuesday of the month at six o'clock. Similar to in-person meetings, the Board invites community members to make public comment, in this case in person by calling the phone number listed and entering the meeting ID during the community comment time. Let's make sure your phone is on mute by pressing star six until it is time to speak. Press star nine to raise your hand if you wish to speak. When called upon, you can unmute yourself by pressing star six again. The public comment procedure allows each person three minutes to speak and comments will be heard during the two community comment periods. In accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, the Board is not allowed to discuss items that are not on the agenda. However, the Board may direct the superintendent to follow up on certain items that arise during public comment if appropriate. As with in-person meetings, public comments received in writing or by email will not be read aloud but will be directed for follow-up where appropriate. Please be mindful of how you present your comments as the Board will not allow complaints against an individual staff member or student in open session unless that individual has requested an open public hearing. Please state your name before speaking. Host, do we have anybody raising their hand for community comments?
Not at this time that I see. Oh yes, having just said that, yes we do. Individual with the last phone number four six seven five, please go ahead.
And we have a timer for our.
Yes, three minute timer.
Thank you. Commenter, you have the floor.
Did we just lose them?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes. For calling in.
Hello, this is Kim Goldsby. On October 2nd, the Shelton School District held a community forum on YouTube. Dr. Apostles opening comments let us know that he didn't realize the presidential debate was in conflict with the forum but didn't feel compelled to change the date. He stated that there were a whopping 24 people watching. He continued stating, and I quote, "We have an open agenda and are open to any questions or concerns or ideas that people may have. And oh, we can start with anything that you might want to ask or comment about." Unquote. Immediately, I noticed that the community chat was not available. YouTube states that there are four reasons for disengagement. One, the video owner selected the setting to disable comments. Two and three are protocols to protect minors and the fourth is the system administrator turning on restricted mode used to screen out potentially mature content that they would prefer not to see or don't want others using their device to see. Did we need to worry about children perusing the community forum? Several times during the forum, Apostle asked Bob McMath if there were callers waiting to speak. Two individuals could not connect while two others spoke. The last caller wanted to know if the emails that individuals had sent in were going to be read. Previous forums afforded this indulgence. And this is where it gets sticky. Dr. Apostle replies, and I quote, "Excuse me, yes, Bob, do you know anything about that?" Bob's reply, and I quote, "Yes, there are questions in the mailbox. I was informed before the meeting that they will be addressed by personal email this evening. Not this evening, that is your call." Apostle's response was, "We'll get to your question ma'am, I guarantee it." My unease is why Dr. Apostle must ask the men facilitating communications what the protocols were for the forum. As Dr. Apostle prepared to close the forum, school board member Sally Brownfield asked the following, and I quote, "During the school board meeting, we had a lot of public comments and at that time we didn't answer questions because it wasn't an open discussion during our meeting." So many, many times they were told that this was an open forum. And so what I'm hearing now, it's only an open forum for those people that can actually call on the phone? So I'm very much interested in the issues people have that are writing emails." Unquote. Well, guess what? The community is interested in those emails. We all know how contentious the comments have been, how the community feels toward leadership in the district. Just who decided forum communications would be compromised this time? We have another serious problem, don't we? Integrity and accountability have now been censored by the very leadership we already do not trust. This all has a hollow ring to it and it's your responsibility to fix it and ensure transparency to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Host, do we have any other community comment?
Um, we'll see if somebody else raises their hand, but at the present moment, I don't see anything.
Alrighty. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on our agenda. Okay. So that takes us to item 4.01, Monthly Report on Bond Projects.
Thank you, thank you Sandy, good evening Board, Dr. Apostle and all. I'm gonna do my best to make this work tonight, but we'll see what happens when I get through this because things are disappearing faster than I can catch them, but we'll see. Can you see this on your screen?
Not yet.
Hmm. Da 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 da. It's everything's gone. Well, I've well, I'm just gonna have to go with what I've got here. Let me start out and while this picture is up. See if I can do this one way or the other. This particular site, I think what's important to say is and I had a better picture, but I appear to have lost it and I don't know where it went. But I will have to take the blame because it's just not there right now. When we look at the football field and the track, we have almost everything done with the exception of the second shot put pit. If you look in the lower right-hand corner, that's shot put pit one. And if you look at, if you kind of flip that over and go the other direction, that's where shot pit, shot put pit two is. We have a little concrete to pour and we need to form the pit with the cinders and that'll be complete. The last thing left on the track is the striping. The striping is scheduled to start tomorrow. It'll take approximately a half a day to lay out all of the striping and then another day to paint the stripes and then let it dry. So hopefully if everything is, stays dry tonight and tomorrow and Thursday, we should have the track completely striped on Friday. What you'll see in this picture is if you walk around, you may not be able to see, we've moved the scoreboard, it's right where my cursor is and the flagpole. So that, that's already been taken care of. This track, we have put down the paved portion and then it was sprayed three coats to get that color, three coats. And each one had to dry and had to sit and we couldn't walk on it. It's been a little slow in the process, but I think we're getting it done. The goalposts are up, the pads are on the bottom of the poles. This right here, for those that go to track meets, there are two of these on this side of the track, these are the long jump and the triple jump pits that are covered up. And they'll be pulled out when we're using those and up here on the north end of the football field is the pole vault and it's pit that's going on. The lights are in, the lights have been turned on, some of the people have seen them from across the, somebody said they were at Walmart and they saw the lights came on and they were like, whoa, what was that? So it's noticeable. So right now, we have over here, these are the goals for the soccer. When you're playing soccer, those have been erected, they'll be stored off-site as soon as we get them done and then they'll put up some ball netting. So hopefully Friday morning, D3 is done. And it looks spectacular, I've walked the track, I've walked the field. This is one beautiful facility for Shelton High School, I got it, that's, that's the bottom line.
Hey Jeff, if you click the box on the top, the maximize button, it might get bigger, go to the right.
I got it, thank you, thank you, I didn't even think about it. But anyway, so this is pretty much the way it is. The fence is in, we put the walkway around the field with the fence so that visitors and people walking around the field wouldn't walk on the track. If I could get over here a little farther, I can't. You'll see the shadows right over here, that's still the tree issue we're trying to resolve. Trevor's really aware of that one, trying to make sure we get those trees out of there so that we don't get stuff dripping and spoiling the track. Soccer lines are all in, logos are all in, lane markers are all in. If I'd got this picture a little later in the day, you would have had all of the corner markers on the end zone in, the pylons, there would have been four of them on each end. And if you look really hard at the bottom of the goalposts, Trevor's really excited because his goalpost verticals are twice as high as they used to be for football, they actually feel like you're have the capability of kicking the ball through the goalposts rather than over them. But at the bottom, the pads on the goalposts are in, those are red and black and say Shelton on them on each end of the field. So that's kind of where D3 is. We hope to have that just about buttoned up on Friday, I didn't, can't think of too many things. They did the final infilling of the football field, they did the brushing and when we walked it on Monday, the turf people said, I don't know if Trevor got the word, but I'm sure they, he said they're ready for football. So I think they're out there practicing tonight. So, so that's that, let me get on to, talk to you a little bit about D1. D1 are the, are the baseball and softball fields. We, we still have too little task to do on the baseball field. We had a couple of punch list items that I think have been all taken care of. We're going to, because of some of the grade changes on the field, we want to level out the warning track that goes all the way around the fence line in the outfield. So we're going to add some small crushed rock on that warning track and we're going to add a gate and repair the fence on the left field corner of the baseball field. I don't have a picture of that, but that's about all the work that needs to be done. Oh, and add the yellow padding to the top of the outfield fence so that matches the soccer field. Those will be done as soon as possible. So let me try and get, now I can, I'll get out of this and try and get the other one. I can't, Bob. I can't seem to get this up. I'm just having a horrible time today and I don't know why.
Can you see it on your screen?
No, that's the problem.
If you already had it open, you should go to Alt Tab until you get to that one.
I know, but it doesn't come up, so if I go to shared screen, I can't find any of my files sitting up here. That's.
Must have accidentally closed them.
I don't know what I did, but I did it good, whatever I did. So let me, let me tell you about that, here we go. Here we go. On the mini dome, I'm gonna walk through this thing. The mini dome is still at least one more week, possibly a week and a half away from finishing. And what you can look at is, we have several problems. You notice here on, I think this is one of the coaches rooms or we don't have any glazing, we don't have any doors. The other part of the work is done. We still have a lot of tiling to do in the locker rooms. You can see in these pictures. So a lot of it is tile and setting fixtures that go in there. I expect that that's going to take longer than, than they had anticipated. Here you're looking at other views, you're looking across through the boys locker room shower area. There's no tile on the floor, no tile on the walls and we have to get all that in and get the plumbing fixtures set. So that's what we're working towards. This is the wrestling room, the floor is down. This picture is old because now the pads are up on the wall and everything. This is a huge wrestling room, Trevor. I hope, I hope your wrestling coach is happy with that one because this is gonna be, it's gonna be a great.
I'd say it's big enough to have two full wrestling mats put in there, so.
Yep, yeah, it's really great. This is the weight room, everything's in, the markings on the floor. In fact, I saw yesterday when I was out there that Trevor and some of his staff were moving things around. I suspect you put things in these rooms.
Not yet, we're moving the old stuff out.
Oh my, okay. So anyway, those, those are going very well, the HBAC's in, everything, so we're just really having a problem at the mini dome on the locker rooms. And that's what all the focus is going to be on to get these done. The pool is absolutely stunning, if you want my opinion. I, I was never a fan of the Shelton swimming pool. I now love the Shelton swimming facility. What you can see here is on the, on the, it's actually the east end of the pool. You have all your starting blocks in, it's a first time in the history of Shelton Pool, you have starting blocks for your swimming team. You have a new scoreboard, you have the new Colorado timing system, it's touchpads in the wall. We've got a new grading system for drainage and everything all the way around the pool. Bleachers putting back in and we've completed the diving pool, reestablished the diving boards and everything. So your pool is absolutely looking fabulous, I think it's going to be a great facility. The other thing that we've been doing and we got this done is the paving. This is in the stadium restroom. We've got this tile finished and done because we needed to have this bathroom ready for the football team. So that's been completed. As of the other day, I believe, so.
That's an outdated picture.
Yeah, and this, these, these pictures are actually a week old, so they show you how much work was done in a week. It was really phenomenal what the contractor got done, but it's going on. So on the D2 portion, the mini dome, we must finish the locker rooms, that's tile and plumbing and finish the paint and get in the door and glazing. And then the last step will be cleaning the mini dome and restoring it back to the use in the district. The last project we're working on, and I think we talked about a little bit earlier, is Bordeaux, the gymnasium. That is slightly hung up because of the fire alarm. We are having a very difficult time. Johnson Controls was hired to put in all the fire alarm and panels and everything. And we can't seem to get a hold of them and get them to the site. And we can't get certificate of occupancy until the fire alarm is in and approved by the fire marshal. So that's turning out to be a little source of irritants with Johnson Controls and we're looking at other options to see if we can get somebody else to come in and get it done. So we can finish that project up. So with that, that's kind of the walkthrough of all the stuff that we have. And I'm willing to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that update, questions and comments from Board members?
So my son had his very first practice in the pool today and he said it was amazing, a big improvement, so I have yet to see it. I'm insanely jealous, I'm looking forward to seeing what it looks like in there, the track looks amazing and the football field, it's, it's really stunning to drive by that and see the, see the beautiful red track and contrasting with the green field, I think it looks really fabulous. Only question I have is how is it going in terms of draining since we've had some updates as far as the drains and we had quite a bit of rain here in the last several days, so how did that go?
Well, when it was raining really hard, we had some puddles because they were, a lot of water came down.
Not on the field though.
Not on.
The field and the track and.
They were.
Facilities are perfect.
Yeah, the water, the ponding I'm talking about is on the bus lane and you know, those areas. However, Monday afternoon when I was out there, there was only one puddle and that was very small. And I think they have to take a look at the slope of that one drain, I think it's a little high by about an inch and I think they'll have to lower it, but after the rains, it drained rather quickly. The drain in front of the mini dome that always had a big puddle has been, we have a new catch basin put in there. Or I should say a dry well. It's been regraded and paved, I expect that to drain very well. There was, there was no water on the fire lane that goes around the mini dome yesterday afternoon, after all the rain we had this, this weekend, so hopes are, are good that we, it's going to be a lot better, let's put it that way.
Little Lake Mini Dome is gone.
Pirate?
Little Lake Mini Dome.
Yep.
No longer exists. With the rain that we had this weekend, it would have panted and without the new drainage, it was, it was a nice thing, I drove by it several times.
Yeah, go drive, drive around in circles saying, yeah, yeah. So yeah, I think, I think we've made great progress in the drainage. Like I said, I think there's one drain that may have to be lowered about an inch, but that's not going to be a severe issue to get it done. So the drainage is going well. It's, it's, it's looking very good if we could just get tileers in to put tiled on on the floors and the walls and we could get the plumbers in to set all the toilet fixtures and put the final coat of paint on it and then I think we're those of you that were in the mini dome during construction, the mini dome was full of all kinds of furniture and junk and contractors equipment and you name it. Yesterday afternoon, I almost felt like we could have a half court basketball game going on out there. The mini dome is been cleaned out considerably, so we're close, not done, I thought I could sell you today, we're done, but not quite yet.
And we're looking to have the mini dome cleaned out by the end of the week.
Yep. So, but the, the pool's ready. The track will be ready, hopefully on Friday with all the new stripes on it, the track's ready now, it just needs painted stripes. The football field's ready, I think they're playing on it today, tonight? Trevor?
Had practice yesterday.
Oh, yesterday? Okay, okay, so, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, this is Tuesday, yesterday afternoon they had practice. So the football field had its christening and I hope Mr. Athletic Director that the, the boys enjoyed it thoroughly.
And ladies.
Yeah, and ladies too, yeah.
The first soccer practice will not be this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, I know the girls are really excited, so.
Super. Any other questions?
I, I just want to say thank you and that's excellent news. I'm, like Sally was saying, I'm very excited to hear that the football field is not having drainage problems. I know that was one of the things that when we were looking at redoing it, we even made sure we had contingency money in there in case there were issues and, and it's just gone so much better than we would have thought. And there's been a lot of excitement around the pictures, I haven't been there myself to see it in person, but I've had several people text me the pictures or that they themselves have been there, so there's a lot of excitement. I mean, both my husband and I are 92 Shelton graduates. I was in track, my husband did football and soccer on that field and to see the facility, the way that it looks, it just looks amazing. And I feel the same way about the pool and the wrestling room. I mean, all of those things, I, and I'm so glad to hear that there are small groups of students that are out there able to practice, that's, that really makes me feel really good that they're out there utilizing these things that are built for them to use. So Sally, I'm glad your son was in the pool, I, you know, that's just, it's, I, that really makes me happy. And then the drainage in front of the mini dome. Yay, I know, really, that is just the best thing, so.
That's been with you for many years.
It's been there forever. So I, I will have to see that one with my own two eyes to believe it, but I'm very happy to hear that it sounds like that's going well, so I appreciate the updates, Jeff. I know that you're really antsy to get it all buttoned up and I'm excited for that to, to be the case here pretty soon as well too, but they're beautiful facilities and I'm excited for our community and our kids to be out there and be able to use them.
Well, it's, 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 it's always sad to see the project close because it signifies an end, but it's also exhilarating to say it's an end. Yeah, it's done, we can use it. And then, you know, you go out there and say, well, let's do the next one, that's, that's my motto, I'm ready for the next one, right Brenda?
But it gives us a, a great new beginning.
Oh. I, I, I was talking to some of the construction workers yesterday and, and I said, when I, I, I've been at Shelton for many years doing different things and I was explaining that I kind of have a little bit of a legacy that goes with Shelton High School and that when I graduated from college back in the dark ages, they one of the things I did was, I was a professional umpire and I used to do quite a few home games for Shelton baseball team. When I was in college, the former high school basketball coach at Shelton was my college basketball coach. And you know, I, I've been in and out of Shelton so many times, I feel like this is almost like a second home. So it's been exciting for me because I have this feeling for the. it's been exciting for me because I have this feeling for the Shelton School District and Shelton High School and it's what you have today is spectacular. Compared to, you know, in what we're going on. And I think it's going to make all of the students feel like they really want to be at Shelton High School. They're going to, they're going to reach out and go for more and the facilities and everything's going to improve athletics. This, this is a great step forward for Shelton, great step forward, all the schools.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff, for everything. And Robert, Brenda and everybody. Took a lot, a team effort. You get it. But boy, it sure is beautiful.
Yep, it's gonna, it's gonna be great. And Sally's going to be the first one to run around the track when the lines are down, right?
Now I've lost track of days, but it seemed like I was just by the high school and saw the track and everything was covered in plastic. That's all gone now?
Yep, yep, that, that plastic, that plastic was down there. So when they started spraying the track red, it didn't get on the football field. So that's, that's what that was for.
It's amazing actually how much work has been done since the pictures that Jeff showed.
Yep.
It is probably, I would say 97% done. It is, everything's a lot, you know, more finished and complete than the pictures Jeff had in the mini dome.
Yep.
Everyday progress.
Yep, every day is, it's, it's just amazing. So we'll be talking with the contractor on Thursday and trying to get his final dates and get this thing buttoned down.
And as a contractor, is he just having a shortage of labor to meet all his jobs or?
Um, I Sandy, I'm going to say some of it was labor, some of it was COVID, some of it was smoke. You know, there's, there's a lot of things. What, what was difficult is, you know, if, if a worker says I can't breathe and walks off the site, takes his crew with him, we're shut down. If, if there isn't absolute control of every sub so that they all stay in harmony working and instead of one sub going home early and the other guy saying, well, I can't do anything. And so, yeah, there's a little bit of all of that. But you know, it's, it's just about over. It's just about over.
All right. Again, thank you for all of your assistance with these projects.
No problem. I'll be, I'll be with Brenda soon. We'll be pouring through bills.
After the 26th, Jeff.
Is that what it is? Okay. I'll try and get some extra sleep.
Thank you. A special thank you to Robert for putting down the pedal, the metal to the pedal. Because we have kind of a personal commitment that by the end of October, we will be done with everything. And I can see that you're moving the agenda, Robert. Thank you.
Team effort, everyone's great. Thank you, everyone.
Hey, no other questions? I'll get out of your hair.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to item 4.02, the elementary school improvement plans. And we have the three elementary school principals here. Did you want to introduce?
I would like for Mary Ann to introduce this issue and Mary Ann, please.
Good evening. I am proud to present our three elementaries who work so collaboratively together and so proud of the work that they've done. But first up, we are going to have Hannah Hoff and Paula Kennedy from Bordeaux share their school improvement plan for the 2020-21 school year.
Thank you, Mary Ann. So I'm going to share my screen here. Okay, so what you're looking at, well, first of all, thank you so much for having us tonight and, and for letting us present this to you. We're pretty excited to be able to move forward with some of these goals. Some of them are carryover from last year and we're continuing to make progress towards them, setting new expectations for ourselves. And some of them are a little bit different because of the fact that we are starting here online and we have different data than what we had last year. So we want to make sure that we are keeping an eye on that. And Paula is here, Paula Kennedy is here with me to help me out with the presentation. Okay. So you can see across the top, we have our four goals, our four district goals. So all of our school district, or sorry, all of our school goals align with our district goals. And of course, we're all working towards that vision of 100% graduation for all. Also at Bordeaux, we are working to coordinate our school improvement goals with our PLC goals, with our TPEP goals. So that we are all working together towards the same. You know, all of our efforts are moving in the same direction. Basically, that's something that I've been really focused on with this team and they're coming on board with that. So for starters, in order to meet the district goal of improving overall academic achievement for students, we are looking at becoming a visible learning school. So we talked a little bit about that last year. Hopefully some of the board members remember a little bit about visible learning and John Hattie. We had quite a bit of training last year. We were able to finish most of our training last year that we had planned, even though we were online and all of that. And we also have, our, our contract was extended into this year as well. So we have one more training coming up that we're actually going to complete in February. So basically, becoming a visible learning school, our goal is that by April 15th of this year, all of our students and all of our staff will be able to define and use the Bordeaux characteristics of a learner. Both to assess and monitor student progress. So the idea of becoming a visible learner is that you, as a student, you can answer, any one of you could walk into our school at any time and any one of our students would be able to answer any of these questions. What are you learning? How will you know if you've learned it? And where are you going next in your learning? And the idea is that students become assessment capable learners. In other words, they understand what they're learning, why they're learning it, and they can tell you how they're going to move on to their next step. So we, right now, or this Friday at our PLC, all of our teams will be working to determine what our baseline data will be. What we are going to, what evidence we're going to gather from our K-12 teaching and learning that will help us to know whether or not students are making progress. So once the baseline is established, once they decide what data set they're going to be looking at, then we'll establish our baseline and then we will set a more specific growth measurement and expectation for this first goal. So that is where we're at with becoming a visible learning school. So our second goal, our, our second district goal is, is towards increasing attendance and engagement. So those school quality and student success indicators. So we're focusing on attendance and student engagement. And these are similar to or the same as what we focused on last year. We're going to measure it a little bit differently this year, that being that we're online. So for our attendance goal, we're working to increase our overall daily average online attendance to 96% or higher. So in March of 2020, we were right about 88%, I believe. For our daily average online attendance and we want to increase that to 96%. We also have a goal in this area around engagement. So we're specifically looking for student engagement in class meetings. Those are their opportunities to engage with their teachers and with their friends. And those are the types of experiences that we believe really help to you know, keep kids involved and excited about being at school. Basically, for starters, it starts their day on the right foot, all of those kinds of things. And their teachers are working really hard to build relationships with their students in those class meetings. So we are looking to increase our student engagement to a daily average of 96% in these class meetings. Again, we are, we're, we're gathering baseline data on this right now. This is another thing that we'll be working on at our PLC on Friday. Now that we're all online, we're all on K-12, we can actually get a good baseline and see how many of our students are attending. But I have a feeling that we might have to actually increase that goal a little bit because I think we already have close to 96% daily average attendance in our class meetings. It's been pretty amazing. So some of the things that we're doing to encourage attendance and engagement, we're doing first of all, we're encouraging our teachers to set their TPEP goals around engagement. And to think about things that they can do to increase student engagement. Also, we are, Paula does an amazing job with this. We're announcing on the daily, in our daily announcements, we tell which classrooms had 100% attendance the day before. We do weekly celebrations. We do monthly celebrations with a balloon and a let's see, I'm going to let Paula tell you a little bit more about the monthly celebration. But before we, before we go a little bit to that, I wanted to let you know that Paula also, and I'm going to let her talk about this, has done an amazing job of checking into increased connectivity with our families, just overall in general. You know, every day we get a report that tells us who has, you know, logged on and what our attendance is looking like. And she's working with our teachers to make sure that we are in, that we are connected with 100% of our kids. We'll talk more about that in Goal Four, but Paula, will you tell us a little bit more about what you're doing with attendance?
With attendance, it's very exciting because we, we are doing really well with attendance. And I think that when we talk about setting goals, maintaining 96% throughout the year is going to be our goal.
Yeah.
Currently, we are at 96% through really that connectivity piece and not letting a day go by that we don't try to reach out and we don't try to make that connection with that family. And if we are struggling, explain to them why and, and what the different ways are that we can make that connection. So we do give awards for 100% in a daily, weekly, monthly. But then the tier two is the conferences and the reaching out to the families that happens daily. And then the tier three is those home visits we make to encourage students to get to the tier two and then eventually to the tier one.
Thank you, Paula. Yeah, it's pretty exciting. Our teachers get pretty competitive about making sure that they have their 100% attendance, which is, which is great. And it works out really well for our kids, obviously, and our families. That they're staying connected. Okay, so goal number three is about being a 21st century educator. And Paula and I were working on this or going over this today for our presentation tonight. We were both sort of remarking to each other that this is so interesting, that this goal is about PLCs. Because as we all know, our teachers have become more of 21st century educators in the last, you know, six months. Than they maybe ever were before with everything that they're doing online and digitally and with technology. So we're incredibly proud of the work that they've done. You know, had we had a goal about you know, becoming virtual teachers, we would have knocked it out of the park. Because like I said, they are really doing an amazing job with that and we're so proud of what they're doing. With that said, we wanted to keep this goal around our development of our PLCs. We worked incredibly hard on that last year. We made some really great growth. And again, it comes back to that coordination piece that our PLC teams are focused on data that will drive the goals that are on this page that you're looking at right now, you know, that will drive student progress towards these goals. So we're all kind of moving in that same direction. So this year, we want to ensure that every single PLC, 100% of the time, every team is using that evidence of student learning from each, at each meeting. So we want them to provide us evidence of the data that they're using at each meeting. So we have a notebook that goes back and forth. So every time they have a PLC, they show us what data they looked at. They tell us what their goals are around that data, how they're going to move kids forward in that data. And then we take a look at it, they turn it back into us. We make comments on, you know, what we think is looking good, what we, and we push them to the next level as well. And we have that conversation going back and forth with those PLCs and we've really seen a lot of progress that way and lots of student growth. So again, we're kind of in that place right now with our actions where we're needing to, now that we understand K-12 a lot better than we did just a couple of weeks ago, even just a couple of days ago. We are at the point where we're ready to start looking at what kind of data sets we can pull from the program to help us to move student learning forward. Okay, and lastly, goal number four is promoting equity in all aspects of the Shelton School District. So as you all know, we have many groups of students who we were concerned about their opportunity, their ability to learn online for a variety of reasons. Some of our more fragile groups were our SED students, our EL students, students with limited connectivity, our Title Lap students, and then we're also looking at our Kinder students. So we decided that we were going to start with providing small group instruction online for students who needed extra support, which we have done. Our Title Lap team has been amazing with getting these small groups going for, for reading interventions. We have also been obviously working every single day with our parents and our learning coaches to increase their ability to guide their students. And we, about two weeks ago, we started bringing kids into the building for short periods of time to provide K-12 support and supplemental instruction. So we have our SED students coming in for, many of our SED students coming in for their services. And a lot of our SED students have social emotional goals. So one of the things that we have been doing is helping to facilitate their connection to their class during those class meetings. So the kids who have those social emotional goals are coming in the morning so that they can get in, onto K-12, into those class meetings. And develop those relationships with their teachers. And then we send them off basically for the rest of the day, again, on the right foot, on the right path. We have EL students coming in. We identified again, our most fragile EL students who did not have learning coach support at home. Or had a language barrier that would make it difficult for them to access the learning on K-12. And we've been bringing those kids in. And then we have our students with limited connectivity, of course. On, let's see, I've got some numbers. So on, on nine 16, on September 16th, we had 39 of our students with no connectivity. Just starting out the year. Today, we have six with no connectivity. However, we're in constant contact with those students and we're providing alternate resources. And we are looking at a plan to bring those kids in as well. So this does not include the small groups that we're bringing in for SED, EL and, and so on. So we have about, like I said, about 20 kids coming in a day and we are looking to increase that to include those six kids who are, are not connected online, but they are connected to their teachers and receiving other resources. So we're basically just trying to make sure that none of these additional barriers create inequities among the different groups of students in our, in our school right now with online learning. So that is all. Are there any questions? I'm going to stop sharing my screen here.
Are there other questions from other board members?
Just a comment. I know a little gal that's in first grade there at Bordeaux. And she was in kindergarten last year and she's one that pretty much just dropped off of the whole thing. They didn't continue. They didn't, they were so frustrated and I just saw this little gal and her mom yesterday and just that things have turned around. They feel so much better and she's really excited. She has 100% attendance.
That is wonderful. Thank you, Sally.
More comfortable.
That's great. You know, we had a PTSD meeting Tuesday or Thursday of last week and one of the parents that was there, this was a parent that was on the phone with me like the first of August, you know, trying to figure out how we were going to make sure to meet the needs of her student and, you know, advocating for her child. And we talked all throughout August, we talked all throughout September, and then she got a little bit quiet and things were getting better. But at the PTSD meeting, she made a comment. She said, I just want to thank you so much. I feel like we're finally settling in. We understand how it works. We're getting a routine down. And it was just so nice to hear that from someone who was so, you know, nervous and, and struggling in the beginning. So thank you, Sally, for sharing those stories, that story because it's nice to hear those. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Anybody else?
A great presentation. It's really nice to hear how high the attendance is right now. And then also just to hear all the different things that you all are doing. I didn't, I didn't realize that you're I didn't, I didn't realize that your school had 20 plus kids coming in in a small group situation. I'm happy to hear that as well, too. And that if kids truly can't get online at all, that you've got interventions set up where they are getting connected with teachers. And hopefully there might be a plan then to bring them in as well.
Yeah.
That's, I mean, I know that this is really challenging. And when I listen to the statewide school board calls that I'm on and I hear from other school board members across the whole state of Washington, you know, elementary school is just a tough, this is tough doing online.
It is.
So I know your teachers and I know you all are working very hard to try to, you know, reach these kids and, and help them when it seems like, you know, we've got such a barrier with having groups and big face-to-face instruction coming in. I know we were looking at, you know, possibly, and I know we still are as a school district, looking at steps to bring back, you know, maybe a hybrid situation. But while our community health just isn't there, we have to pause on that. So, so I, yeah, it's really nice just to hear what you're doing. I know that, that you do a great job and so I wasn't worried about that, but it's just always nice to hear the specifics of what's going on.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I know. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie.
And I would say I'm just delighted also to hear the progress that's made from, you know, those initial frustrating few days and that, you know, we, we keep chipping away at it. We keep looking.
Yep.
But we haven't just thrown our hands up and said, well, that's the best we can do and this is how we're going to go forward. And, you know, we've had a lot of comments from the community. And so, you know, to hear that we've gone from, you know, 39 with no connectivity down to six, that's a, a big step forward. And, you know, that you're working with those six and utilizing other resources to, to still provide for them. They haven't been forgotten.
Absolutely.
You know, handled in a different, different manner. So appreciate the update on all of those things that the school is working towards in their school improvement plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
I just wanted to thank Hannah and Paula for their presentation and also thank you to your staff for all the hard work that you do. Next up, I'd like to present Amber Targis, the principal at Evergreen Elementary, and Ron Goodell, the dean of students at Evergreen Elementary.
All right. I hope mine's going to be a seamless, that I can get everything presented. I was really worried that the power was going to go out. So Mary, thank you for posting that stuff in there, just in case I got lost, be able to phone in. So I appreciate that. I just wanted to say first off, I feel extremely lucky to be a part of this elementary school principal team. I feel like we are working together and a lot of the things that you're hearing that are going on in Hannah's school are also going on in our schools. So it's really nice to be all on the same page and to be working so well together. So just wanted to throw that out there. And I asked Ron to be here. He's been doing some amazing work, really connecting with students and families and working on attendance and getting those small groups in. So I'm going to have him talk about that in a few minutes, but I want to see first if I can succeed at technology. So just give me a moment. Let's see. All right. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. So a lot of this plan I inherited, but we've worked together as a leadership team over the summer. We started our work early this year. We started our work in July and really putting this in front of the leadership team and making this something that is going to guide our work this year. So we are still in progress on it and that is what I have let staff know as well, too, is that this is a document that's going to change over time because our needs are currently changing right now. And even with the COVID situation, they're changing daily. So we're really using this as a guide for us and to guide our work this year, but knowing that some of this may absolutely change. So our first goal in improve overall academic achievement for students. So right now, we don't have our baseline data, so I was happy that Hannah brought that up first. So due to COVID, we're still waiting to set this goal. So we're really working on this and our PLCs on Friday this week. And really trying to find out what assessments we're going to be able to pull and what assessments are going to be useful for different grade levels. And really taking some time to look and see the K-12 assessments and what we're able to pull. So I think that's going to be mostly our work on Friday this week, so it kind of lines up perfect for this presentation. We didn't plan it that way, but it just worked out perfectly. So our actions for that are really gathering evidence of learning and really taking time, like I said, to look into the K-12 assessments and really some of our supplemental assessments as well to see what we can do to pull those, pull that. So usually we would have an S-BAC score in here, so our smarter balance scores, but we're adjusting this year and going a different direction with that. So our second area is increase school quality and student success indicators. So we're going to really work on attendance scores this year, increasing average yearly attendance of 96% or higher. Along with what Hannah said, we are about 94 to 96% attendance on a daily basis as well, too. And that, you know, really is credit to my teachers working really hard to reach out to families, to make connections. We have a lot of families that speak Spanish and so really taking the time to walk them through what the platform looks like and connecting with them. I can't give enough credit to my teachers for doing all the great work that they're doing around that. And Ron, would you like to put a little in about attendance as well?
Yeah, so as Amber said, we are really pleased with our attendance. We have, you know, as all, all schools start off with the class meeting. We have several staff members who have 100% attendance in their class meetings to start the day. And then I follow up right away with, with families and students that aren't connecting in that, in that meeting. And so I'm working with our attendance secretary. I'm making phone calls. We do home visits. Staff are, are making connections with those, with those families. And then we find out, is it a, is it that they don't have internet access? And we, we've been successful, but we still have some families unfortunately that are still waiting for, for that resource. We have several of our, just similar across the district that go to daycares and, or a babysitter. And they may have internet at their home, but at the daycare they don't. So I'm waiting for some more resources there to, to provide so they can get there. I, I hear stories of parents that are using their, their own phone as a hotspot and using all their data. And because they want their, their, their child to be on that class meeting, but I don't want them using all their data. So I want them to get a hotspot. So we've been working with them. And then we started, I'll just talk about it now, with attendance or, or with that connectivity to increase that attendance. We, we started to bring students in. We could go Monday. Today, we had, we have an AM group and a PM group. We had 24 students today, but 12 students in the AM. They're in there from eight forty-five to eleven. And they get their, their breakfast and lunch. They take their lunch when they leave. And then our second group comes in at 12 o'clock daily till 2:15. And we have, we have para, para professional support in there as well for, for our ELs. We, with bringing students in, they can get, we actually are getting some testing done. And it's just been, it's pretty fun to go down there. I, I go throughout the, go down the gym and see where their socially distanced, or each student has their own table. We have 12 tables in there. And it's just been, it's been very successful, but we're graduating students out already. Part of it was connectivity and we, we got, I got a hotspot for a student yesterday. And, and yesterday or today was his last day. He's, and I, and I have a new student coming in tomorrow that, that needs that support. So, but attendance has been a, a big, big push. With that, you know, we have, we also have the, the tier one supports. We're, we're, we're doing celebrations. And it's just been exciting to see what, with this, you know, online learning, what our attendance has been. Very pleased with it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ron. Yeah, Ron's been doing a really great job with that. He even made a special guest appearance yesterday trying out our new mascot for our school. So we got to advertise that down with the in-person students. So that was kind of a fun way to celebrate with them and celebrate them being there as well, too. He scared a few of them, but most of them were pretty pleasantly surprised. So that was awesome. Thanks for being a good sport about that, Ron. Another thing that we've also added is we're doing weekly attendance meetings with our attendance secretaries. So Ron talked about that a little bit as well, too, and really just making sure we're identifying those barriers and seeing what we can do to get students connected and get students attending school regularly. So that's been great work. And then something else that we're focusing on, and I actually had somebody ask me, you know, is, is this important right now? And I really think it is. So really increasing our tier one, our school-wide supports for students and staff. This data was taken at the end of last year and this is why I didn't currently have this job, but I was collecting data for the team. And this is when I first became interested in working at Evergreen, is that they were conducting their tier fidelity inventory. So I think you've heard a little bit about that from the SEL committee, but really just assessing where the building is and where they need to go. So I was able to conduct that and figured out that they were about 47% implementation and I'd really like to get us to 65%. But something that's really important to understand about this is that it's the school-wide systems of support. So it's really not just looking at students as well, too, but it's also looking at staff. So we've talked about the SEL supports and how important they are for everyone at this time. Because everyone is struggling and we need to really make sure that supports are in place so that they can grow and, you know, we can be successful during this time. So that has been our work around that. For our third area, ensuring every staff member is a 21st century educator. So this one, we've only, this is going to be our second PLC this week, but we're really looking forward to that and making sure that we're really focusing on analyzing data. I will say the data that we're analyzing looks a little bit different than it has in the past. It looks more around connectivity issues and attendance. So we're really focusing on having teachers identify some barriers and some different interventions that would be helpful for student success. So we will be working more on that and really just kind of hitting home the actions for that is the staff training around PLC Plus as a tool. So PLC Plus is something that was brought to Shelton School District last year and we did some work around it with administrators. And we all really felt that it was, you know, something great that we would love to use with our staff as well, too. So I'm hoping that we're still going to continue that work. And it's really focusing on five key areas that I think are important to share with you all. Where are we going? That's a question we would ask in our PLC. Where are we now? How do we learn moving forward? What did we learn today and who benefited and who did not? So really making those the five guiding questions that we're looking at all our data with. So I thought that was important to bring to you guys as well. And, and then our last area for promote equity in aspects of Shelton School District. So I'm really excited about this one. And this one, I would say the leadership team had a lot of influence on. And really I could tell this was an area that we needed to work on. So improving clarity for families and opting into the dual language program through clear policies and procedures. So the dual language program has changed a lot over the last few years. And so with that comes change and we need to look at things and see how things were originally done and then make some adjustments along the way. So in order to help us do that, we are going to work closely with the dual language task force. And we're identifying that in our building right now. We're putting interest out to anybody that would want to be on the team. And we have some pretty interested and, yeah, some pretty interested people. So we're excited to get that rolling and we're going to, our goal is to get that rolling by the end of the month or at least get the team identified by the end of the month. And we'll be able to do some great work around that with updating our brochures so we can make sure all the information we're giving to parents or anybody who's coming through the schools when we're open is accurate and up to date. So we're really excited about that one. Another area is we're going to really focus this year, and this was from last year as well, too, is on, is engaging EL students and families and really engaging in any meetings or events that we have, even outside of school. So right now that's challenging and we're trying to think outside of the box. And I was able to talk to my EL teacher the other day who's doing wonderful things supporting her parents. She actually has a weekly EL support group for parents that they can come in and feel, you know, it's a comfortable spot for them to ask questions or ask for clarification. And they're going to be bringing in kind of guests throughout the time. So it could be a JEN Ed teacher. It could be, I asked to be at one of them, so it could be me. It could be our family liaison. So really connecting them to all those resources that we have in the building and just giving them a safe space to really ask those questions and get some answers. So that's some work that we are doing right now. And also I think Ron mentioned it earlier, but we are bringing in some of those EL students as well. And we have some specific support around that, some para educators that are supporting that and able to get some assessments. So we're really excited about that work. And yeah, are there any questions from the board?
Any questions or comments from other board members?
I'll jump in. Thank you, Amber. Again, just like Hannah, I really appreciate you going through each one of these. And I'm also happy to hear about these different groups of students that you're able to bring in there and, you know, either help out acutely by getting them the hotspot and having other ones come in or continue to have them in there for assessments or if they don't have that. I, I know that, you know, Evergreen's a special school because it's our only dual language program. And with that, I know there were just concerns with families with K-12. Is that getting better? Are, are you as a school able to help overall students getting acclimated to that program and the use of dual language within that?
So I think it's, that's a great question. I think it's getting better, but I think we're also adapting and figuring out different ways to use the curriculum. So for example, like in kindergarten, we're finding that there's a lot more activity going on if we're doing some more live lessons. So if teachers are taking on a learning coach aspect a little bit more and walking them through some of those activities. So we're finding a little bit more success with adapting things. But we still do have parents that are struggling to connect and we're really trying to work on resources and trying to identify what those barriers are to assist. Is it perfect? Not yet, but we have a great team that is supportive and, you know, we're working as hard as we can to make those connections.
Yeah.
I also wanted to add to that. We, we also have the Maravias curriculum that supports our, our dual language. And that's, fortunately, we have that online, you know, and that's been a big, big support. So between the two, but, but it's, there's, it's a struggle. But you know, we're, we're now the second week of October and I think we're, we've made a lot of gains. And that's one reason why we're, 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 we're not giving up. I, if you came by our school, you would see sometimes just a family sitting out in front. We have a table every single day set up up in front of Evergreen. And that's for, you know, a parent comes by and we, we, we're right there and, and everybody steps up. If it's myself or Amber or a teacher, para, but we're, you know, supporting.
And that's, I think, I, I think we received an email from, from someone there at Evergreen, too, that was saying that there have been instances where you've gone out to with proper PPE to people's homes to help them get connected.
Oh yeah, we, we've done home visits too, yes.
Walk through the Chromebook and, and, you know, just how to actually utilize some of this technology because there's so many people that don't use computers on a day-to-day basis. And being thrown into this has been a brand new challenge. So, yeah, I, I appreciate, you know, hearing from each one of these. It's really apparent to me just how much each school is trying to reach out to the individual needs of the family. And there's a lot of them, so that's hard and there's a lot going on. And I just, I appreciate hearing about all the efforts that are being made to help all of the families while they struggle with this.
And I appreciate the clarification on home visits. When that was touched on before, I assumed it was a phone call home visit, a Zoom home visit. So it's, I appreciate the clarity that it was a physical home visit on, on those occasions. So yeah, very happy to see the progress. You know, understand that there's still work to be done. And, you know, like I said before, with Bordeaux's presentation, we'll just keep chipping away at it that until we can address everything. So appreciate all your work on that. And appreciate that, you know, there's an emphasis also on including the families in social activities and in community activities. So, any other questions or comments from other board members? Okay.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
And we'll go back to Mary Ann.
All right. Next up, we have
All right. Next up, we have Mary Johnson, the principal at Mountain View Elementary, as well as her assistant principal, Alex Brown Smith, to present their school improvement plan. Take it away, Mary.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to, first of all, thank the school board and Alex Apostle for um inviting us here tonight to present Mountain View Elementary SIP. Um, again, I'm here with myself and my assistant principal, um Alex Brown Smith. Our SIP is a really fluid document. Um, we really like to apply what we call the improvement cycle, plan, do, study, and adjust. So last June, we completed our second plan, do, study, and adjust um around improvement. And then this year, we found ourselves kind of in a new territory, this online learning. So I think you'll see throughout our uh SIP presentation tonight that we're really applying the lens of study this year as we look at how we do remote learning and uh virtual virtual learning. So sorry. Let me, oh, see, I've already forgotten what I was supposed to do, guys. Excellent. Okay. Thank you for your patience, guys. Can everybody see that? Okay? Excellent. Okay. All right. So you'll see that we also have the same four goals, all leaning towards the district goal of a hundred percent graduation for all. So goal one, overall academic achievement. Our goal here is to increase the number of students making typical or high growth in reading or math. Um, but during the remote learning model, as a staff, we've talked a lot about what can we do? While we know student achievement is important, um i- it's what we do, and it's how we're going to get to a hundred percent graduation. We also acknowledge that we don't necessarily have the same types of assessments and data that we've had in the past to determine whether our students really are working towards making that growth. So we've identified some things that we know have a very positive and direct impact on student success. And that is attendance, engagement, and participation. We know that when a student attends school, we know that when they are engaged in their learning and they're participating in lessons and work, that they are more likely to increase their academic achievement. In working with our teachers this year, they will be selecting one or more of those three areas and creating SMART goals around them to uh measure student growth in their teacher evaluation system. So an example of that might look like in the area of engagement. Uh, they have talked about how they could use uh K-12 data, Skyward data, and a lot of their observational notes to look at increasing how many students are participating in three or more uh synchronous or asynchronous lessons a day, for example. In participation, that might look again like looking at some K-12 or Skyward observational, or even some work completion data around how many students are participating and completing work through the online, both synchronous and asynchronous levels. We did do some assessments this year. Our kindergarten students all were able to get some of our uh benchmark assessments from the fall done. Um, and we did that for two reasons. One, we wanted to have some baseline data for our children. And also our kindergarten students all um had the walk kids assessment down, and this was a way to sort of get that started off. So the first three days of school, we had almost every one of our students show up with their parents um in front of the school. And the teachers were able to go over some um typical things about what kindergarten looks like. They were able to do some of the assessments. They were able to provide um instruction right then and there to the parents on how to register and use the K-12 system. Um, and a couple of the action plans that we are going to be looking on um this fall are really investigating and discussing how can we use curriculum-based measures um in the K-12 system? So we're going to be monitoring student, both student data from the K-12 assessments and assessments our teachers are going to push out. And we really want to talk about training our parents about the importance of the assessments that the kids are doing in K-12 being authentic student work. So a cute little story is we actually had a parent a couple of weeks ago, a little second grade boy. And he was taking the test and the teacher was watching him, and she heard his grandpa lean in and say, I think the answer is actually. And we all laughed about there, but just the importance of authentic assessments results being the students' word. Um, we want to really look at the class connect, um start pulling small groups into differentiated learning. So some of our teachers are doing that during their um class connect sessions. For Title Lap, we started our Title Lap groups, and we are currently serving seventy-two students in first through fourth grade. They are receiving thirty-minute class connect lessons um daily, and that is really exciting. And then one of the biggest struggles or challenges, I should say, that we have had is really looking at how do we assign and receive student work from our students, especially in the uh third and fourth grade when they don't have workbooks. So our teachers have been doing a lot of work around ways to get the information out, but more importantly, back to them. So they can make formative decisions regarding student learning and mastery, as well as that very important piece of providing feedback to the students on exactly how they're doing. You'll notice in the first goal, we talked about how attendance was really important, but I moved that to the second goal because it goes right in with increasing school quality and student success indicators. And so I'm going to let um Alex Brown Smith speak to these two goal areas.
All right. Thank you. Um, so at the beginning of the year, and I'm, I hope you, everybody can hear me okay. At the beginning of the year, uh the first couple of weeks, we had a ninety-one percent um daily attendance average. So it was pretty low, and we were hoping to increase that up to ninety-six percent. Um, we are up to ninety-four and a half percent. So we are getting pretty darn close to our, our goal. And we've just been working really hard with um each of the individual families to try to break down those barriers. Um, to get them, you know, engaged in their learning. And so a lot of that's been connectivity. We've been working to get hotspots out. We've passed out about fifty-five hotspots to families, making sure we get them internet. We've done home visits. Um, so the teachers, the staff have been working really hard to make sure that we can get past those barriers to get the kids connected on the K-12 and um engaged in their learning. Uh, so that's with, that continued work, we're hoping to improve that up to ninety-six percent. We're also going to release a little video that will be hopefully um just a little bit more about attendance to help educate the parents. So that'll come out soon. Um, where I will probably make a little bit of a, a fool of myself. So, but that's okay. It's kind of fun. Um, and as far as school culture goes, um, we've been working hard with our tier one team to talk more about those expectations that we have in regards to remote learning. And so we've worked hard to create a matrix about those expectations um with our students. And um, we're hoping that that will help increase that school culture as well. So a lot of those teachers are using that matrix to help teach those expectations with their kids too, and provide that safe learning environment. We have also done a lot of work in regards to um, well, our counselor has done a lot of work too in regards to our kids, and she's created a wonderful page that allows kids to kind of go there and get help if they need it as well. We've had, um, we're making sure to also investigate any allegations of bullying as well. We've only had one, but we're, we've been able to work through that with both um parent and student to make sure that um they know the expected behaviors in regards to them.
Excellent, Alex. Thank you so much. Uh, area goal three, um ensure that every staff member is a twenty-first century educator. Um, our goals around a hundred percent teacher participating and effective PLCs and professional development, as well as teachers augmenting their teaching to include technology. So all I can say is there's no better year for this goal. The art of teaching remotely is being a twenty-first century teacher. So what a great time for us to be doing this. A hundred percent of our teachers to date have participated in professional development and PLCs. Um, the time and the effort that our teacher staff have put into personal professional development so that they can maximize their teacher effectiveness on the K-12 platform is unlike anything I've ever seen. I couldn't ask for more dedication and hard work from um the teachers in our building to do everything they can to find out how they can, uh again, best meet their students' needs. We've never done this before. There's no book on exactly how to do it, but I would say that they're all writing a bestseller at this exact moment. We're going to continue on teacher-driven PD. Oh, we have a two-hour New Row. New Row is part of the K-12 platform that uh manages the Class Connect feature. Class Connect, for those of you that might not know yet, would be similar to having a Zoom meeting, only it's through the Class Connect platform. So we're going to be doing um some more in-depth training um on Class Connect. We are also going to be doing some training around some EL uh practices. And um, kind of holding off on our last district-directed time to maybe do some work as we hopefully move into a hybrid model at some point, well, some point soon. Uh, we've had two PLCs so far, and those PLCs have really focused on data around engagement and attendance. Um, and the teachers have been working really hard on creating interventions and supports to again, remove those barriers. Um, and again, around P, uh, our PD, Amber talked a little bit about this. It's that PLC plus and those five guided questions. So being able to use those questions to really help them think deeply about the data and what they're going to do with it. A lot of our work this year has been done in goal four, promoting equity in all aspects of the Shelton School District. We have a goal around reducing uh our discipline referrals and increasing the number of our EL students who making adequate progress as measured by our ALPA data. This has been um again, the area probably where we have done most of our focus. So we have really looked at the SM, SEL needs, the social emotional needs of our students, our staff, and our families. It's really at the forefront of what we're doing right now. Our teachers are having class meetings daily where they are building culture and community in an online learning environment. It's a big task to do. Uh, most of our grade levels are also conducting social emotional learning lessons um at, either through their class connect meeting in the morning or throughout the lessons that they're all, that they're doing. We have an MTSS team in place at Mountain View, and they have done some amazing work at the tier one and at the tier two, three level. Our school counselor has provided lessons and supports to our families. And again, we're implementing, oh, I think what I believe is a well-designed tier one plan. Um, Alex Brown Smith does a lot of work with our tier one team. Um, they're probably one of the most energetic group of people that I have met. They just actually had a meeting um this morning, and uh we've got postcards. We have five hundred postcards printed out, and they're all sending postcards to kids. We're doing student of the week, uh calls and notes homes, confetti, that's sort of our way of saying way to go. You followed one of our three uh guiding principles, which is um at Mountain View, we are kind, we work hard, and we like, we are, we try to be very safe. Um, another exciting thing that's starting tomorrow, our specialists are going to be doing something new. It's called Out and About Wednesdays. And so we're super excited. They are going to be going out along with our um school counselor, Mrs. Groot, our um um, uh native ed um facilitator, uh Ruth Bocat, and then Mr. Brown Smith and myself will be popping in. They're going to be going out to a couple of neighborhood parks that are part of the Mountain View Neighborhood School and doing some activities with the kids. So it's a way to really get the kids engaged. Um, the activities they're going to be doing tomorrow will be like an obstacle course. So we've planned activities that require kids to touch nothing. They can come in, they must have their mask, and they run through the obstacle course, and then they run right back out the other end. But it's a time for us to cheer them on and just to say hi. So we're really excited. Hopefully the weather will hold. Um, equity of access has been probably again, one of the biggest things. Um, at no time, I think, at least in my educational career of twenty-nine years, has the importance of equity of access to school been more challenging than right now. Alex spoke a little bit to this, but to, to date, we have connected fifty-five families to the internet by providing them with hotspots. We currently, when I wrote this earlier, we had two students, but I have been informed that we now only have one student who is currently not able to access K-12. Um, we've put in a ticket. That's sort of our.
We just got them a Chromebook today and everything, so we're down to one.
Super exciting. Um, we provide daily K-12 support to our families. So I often will say to Alex, um, okay, put on your K-12 tech support hat. It's probably about seventy percent of what he does. So we track, pa- parents call us, teachers, we track their materials, we reset passwords and credentials. We currently are in the process of resetting learning coach accounts. Um, it's just a huge part of what we do. But we have discovered that by us maybe being that um support for them has been a little easier than them calling the K-12 hotline. So it's been really great, and we've um had great conversations with our families. Um, the first three weeks of school, our two secretaries up front, um, it was priceless. They had the same two grandmothers call them every morning for the first three weeks. They call right before nine AM, and my two secretaries, Julie and Gwen, would walk them through how to get their kids on their class meeting. We were so excited when they didn't call the first morning, and they actually got on by themselves. So we know that this is a huge thing for all of us, and for many of us, it's our grandparents. It's the, it's the children's grandparents and great-grandparents who are doing this, and they're like, wow, I've never like really thought how to get on, and now I'm trying to figure out how to get my little grandchild on every day. Um, something that I'm very proud of is the family support events that we have done. So we had an initial uh tech outreach on September ninth and tenth. Um, we had, um, we connected, again, this is additional fifty-five families with Chromebooks, hotspots, K-12 logins, and we provided instruction on how to work within K-12. So over those two days, we had more than fifty-five families come, and we were able to spend anywhere between a half hour and an hour with them one-on-one. We had a mom translator there. There were many of us involved, and it was really a wonderful thing to do. During the week of September twenty-ninth through October second, we did twelve home visits to deliver hotspots, Chromebooks, packets, and also then just checking on families that we had not seen yet or had not engaged in uh K-12. To date, we have eighteen students and families that have accessed the evening Zoom text and support that is provided by Kat Kelly, one of our EL teachers at Mountain View. She offers these on Wednesdays and Thursday evenings uh between six and eight. We're doing them in the month of October to see if we can get those last few people engaged and connected. We've had numerous meetings between staff and families out front of school uh to provide materials and support. And as well, we've also had two elementary community forum events, uh our weekly robo-calls, daily phone calls to concerned parents. It's been a real big part of what we've done. We want to make sure that every parent feels heard, uh because what they're living right now is valid. Um, adequate EL progress is our last goal in the equity area. I'm really excited to say that, you know, based on our um spring twenty-twenty ALPA results, forty-eight percent of our students made adequate progress. That means that they approved in either two domains, reading, listening, speaking, or writing, or they increased in one proficient proficiency level from either emerging to progressing or progressing to proficient. So we were pretty excited, forty-eight percent. Once we have the rest of our ALPA assessments from this fall for like our new and rollies and stuff, we'll be looking at writing a new SMART goal. Um, our two EL teachers met with every classroom teacher in September and shall, shared the ALPA data for their students. We also started an um EL Facebook page. So one way that we've been able to really engage our families is um we have a group on Facebook. And so it's, everything's in Spanish, so we can answer their questions and provide support and make sure that they're also getting information on everything that is going on. Again, we've had our EL tech support evenings. Um, we are going to continue with some um language acquisition PD, uh hopefully through Anne Rinker. We're talking about maybe doing some of that with um Evergreen, maybe on October thirtieth. Our EL teachers are continuing to use Imagine Learning. And um, our EL teacher with the help of Kelly Neely, thank you so much, Kelly. They, uh, one of the big questions we've been getting from our parents, uh especially, especially of our EL families is there's so much, what is the priority and what is most expected? And when we have an EL student, they're trying to go to all the classes. They're trying to do live learning, synchronous learning, asynchronous learning, Imagine Learning, EL support. So they put together an EL learning plan, and we're filling those out on all of our students. And it will really help the parents understand when we, when they see a list of all these options, which ones do we want them to focus the most on, and then which ones might be optional? So our teachers are working on them this week, and we're hoping to roll them out next week. Um, along with that, we have, um, we've had special ed children coming into our building for the last, uh, well, since the sixteenth um, of um, of September, and that has gone really well. And we have um some EL students starting. We have twelve students starting um next Monday. Um, we'll have two groups of six, and we have another twelve students that if we have not been able to engage them um within the next couple of weeks, we'll be starting them as well. Phew. All right. I shared an awful lot. Thank you so much for your time. Do you guys have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mary and, and Hannah and Amber. This is very well done with all of your presentations. I think what I'm most impressed with is the creativity in terms of problem-solving and finding ways to engage and connect with, with families and students. Um, Mary, I love the social emotional learning component that you're, you're putting in. I think that's really important right now. I, I, kudos on that. That's fabulous. Um, the, the creativity of thinking of a Facebook page, that's brilliant. I mean, why didn't we think of that before? That's a fabulous way of connecting. I know in the online environment that a lot of times those uh parent Facebook groups can be a, a good source of information and, and supports and information, especially when they're at, at nine at night trying to figure out. at, at nine at night trying to figure out how to connect to something. It's often another parent will have the answer to that. So I think that's a really wonderful idea. Um, it is an interesting time to be trying, talking about equity and, and equity of access is a really, uh, interesting idea. I'm, I'm, I want to say congratulations to all of you with the work that you're doing and, and thank you for your dedication to our families and students and the, the amazing work. I know you're going above and beyond right now.
Thank you, Sally. Other board members with comments or questions?
Well, I just wanted to ditto the things that Sally said, I really enjoy hearing uh, all the creative solutions and, um, and, and sometimes we're still working towards those solutions, but saying, okay, how do we get this and, and moving, move in the bar? Uh, one thing I've heard from some, um, so I'm interested in knowing is, um, in the K-12 platform, um, the level of, um, the level of the lessons, some have thought that, that, um, what came with this, I don't want to say canned, but kind of this standard thing that's used, uh, far and wide is, um, that in some areas it was, it's different, but it was, uh, at a higher level than what, um, our kids have been used to. Have you found that?
Well, Sally, I definitely think we have seen pieces of that. So there's some important things to remember. Um, and Kelly Neely always does a great job of reminding all of us of this. Um, so you know, um, we, these, the curriculum is based off the common core and, um, the common core is definitely very rigorous. Uh, you add to that the fact that we, um, really, um, last spring, we were, our focus was really on the main maintenance of skills, not so much on the instruction of new learning. And so for a lot of our students, they missed almost a third of the end of their year. So there are definitely some standards that were not mastered. So you add that to the fact that we have this new program that we're doing online. Um, with probably some, um, I don't like to use the word holes, but definitely some pre skills that needed to be there. So that's been a big, um, a lot of work that our teachers have had to do is to look at the K-12, we did finally get some alignment documents, those have been helpful to look at the alignment um, of the K-12 materials to the common core standards and, um, but really taking that time to look at that and saying, are our kids ready for that? Can we move some of these units around? Is there a unit that we might not even need to do because come to find out, it really isn't, um, a common core requirement. It's not one of our essential standards. And then, um, and then with that, if I do need to teach some prerequisite skills, what do I have in my toolbox? Maybe some curriculum that we actually have in our classrooms or some other things that I could use to do some pre teaching, um, before we roll into that unit of instruction. So, you know, we have learned so much in the last few weeks, um, that have just made us, um, you know, just so much better at what it is that we're doing with this, with K-12. So, um, you know, you always like to say hindsight, sure, it'd have been great to have, you know, done this work, uh, for six months and, but you know, we, we're doing it and we're, um, you know, just doing our best, trying to figure out what's working and, and the differentiation, you know, that's what our teachers are so good at. So how do you differentiate? Um, so I just think every day our teachers are chipping away at it and they're frantically talking to each other. We've done some amazing professional development amongst the three buildings where we've allowed them time to meet um, and say, what are you doing and how's it working? And the feedback that, um, Hannah and Amber and I have got has been wonderful. Like we have so much expertise right here. So let's work together, right, to figure that out. So we've had some great feedback from them around that. So definitely you are right, we've looked at some of these, I'll, I'll never forget one of the first, you know, the first fourth grade math unit. We were all like, oh my gosh, we usually do that if we're lucky at the end of fourth grade. So, you know, but we, we would, we said that two years ago when we pulled out our new Nat Geo, like, oh my gosh, that looks so different. So, you know, it, it, you know, we, it takes us a little while to get used to a new curriculum.
Well, it's really, it's really good to hear, um, how people are working together, pulling together to, um, to support not just the students, but the families as well and, and our whole school unit as a community. So it, kudos, I know you, everybody have really worked really hard and, um, we're only going to do this together and I really, it warms my heart to hear what I, what I'm hearing is a camaraderie of, of doing this together and, um, yeah, who knew we'd be in this situation, but here we are and let's go.
Yeah, and Sally, I, I want to jump in on that because I, it was evident to me as I was listening to the three presentations. I, I write notes and what I was writing down was just thank you to all of the principals and vice principals for working together. I mean, just like what Sally Brownfield is saying, it's amazing to have the collaboration and the support that it all sounds like you have there and a genuine, um, you know, enjoyment of working with each other and hearing from each other. And that's going to make our school district really strong. Um, and then the other thing that just really strikes me is, you know, it's amazing how far we have come since the spring when everything got shut down. I mean, just listening to all of you and the refinements that have been made along the way, the interventions, the reaching out. You know, it's a lot of work, it's, that is definitely not lost on us. And as a parent with two kids going through this, I know my side of it. And I know that on your side, there's a lot of planning and a lot of replanning and a lot of meetings and a lot of, you know, just a, a lot of work and just really want to thank you all for what you're doing right now and all of your staff. You know, the teachers, the paras, you know, the food service, everybody that's working together with all of this while you bring groups into the school. So, um, thank you.
And you haven't lost that individual school spirit. I also spoke to, um, a parent of a little kindergartner and asked, well, how's this going being in kindergarten? And the parent said, she's at Bordeaux, she's, oh, she just loves it and she especially likes it because she gets to bark. Oh, good fun.
Thank you very much for that. I just would like to add, I have really appreciated hearing the principal's point of view. Um, you know, we've had, uh, we've listened to directors and, you know, principals have a different, different details and different perspective. I've enjoyed hearing it from a different perspective. Um, you know, it seems like we have made great progress on connectivity issues. And so now we're tackling engagement and focusing on that. And that's a lot of fun. And there's been a lot of, uh, you know, nationwide, all sorts of, uh, ideas that have cropped up on ways to do fun things with students. And so I was excited to hear some of the, uh, community focus that's going on, the engagement focus. And, um, kind of on a humorous note, I talked to an individual the other day that works in, uh, tourism. And, um, he said, he's discovered that there's a whole generation of kids growing up that don't know what postcards are. And so when he meets people, he will ask everybody, do you know what a postcard is? And you have to tell him, if you can tell him, he gives you a postcard and you get to address it and he will mail it for you. Well, if he runs into any of our kids, they're going to know what a postcard is. So, that was just a funny little tidbit there to add. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir. You're still on mute? There we go.
I, I, I truly believe in the following, that ultimately as goes elementary education, so goes the school district. You know, we have a vision, 100% graduation, graduation matters Shelton. The Shelton School District and community is blessed with exemplary educators. Tonight is a clear indication that our staff continues to succeed even during the most difficult times. I'm extremely grateful with where we are and where we are going. The best, in my opinion, is yet to come. I have nothing but praise for our people. The, I mean, if you're in what we're in every day, it is an unbelievable challenge. And I've been in this profession a long time, but I'm being pressed more this year than any year prior. And to listen and to hear our principals and assistant principals talk about the accomplishments that they've made and it's still October, uh, thirteenth, that's pretty amazing. And we hear a lot of the negative, but let me tell you, reality is in the Shelton School District is not negative. And tonight you heard about the Shelton School District. And you're going to hear more of what you've heard tonight from our other principals and assistant principals and our staff. We are doing great things for kids, for families every single day. And so, uh, I'm very proud of our principals and assistant principals and our teachers and our elementary schools and throughout the district for everything that they're doing every single day. I thank you. Great job.
Thank you very much. And, uh, we'll have some more school improvement plans at the next, um, work meeting later this month. In the meantime, we will go to the graduation pathways toolkit, next up on our agenda. Go on directly to Dawn or are we having somebody introduce?
Dawn? I'm, oh.
Hi there, Dawn.
Hi there, good evening. Um, you received in your board packet, uh, sometime this week, a 32-page graduation toolkit. I'm happy to tell you, I'm not going to go over all 32 pages with you. We're going to focus on pages nine through 16 that are in the packet. Um, I'm not going to put them up on the screen, I'm just going to talk to y'all so I can see all your faces. I also have Dina Alley and Bob Tronson here with me and they're going to chime in whenever they can. They've been working away on this, uh, spending a lot of time looking at the pathways. Um, what I'm planning on doing is giving you abbreviated presentation of each pathway. Uh, House Bill 1599 that passed last year has provided, uh, eight, uh, seven additional pathways for us, uh, towards graduation. I'm a firm believer that with eight total pathways now, um, 100% graduation is, is coming, coming quickly toward, to us. Um, and we are still being able to provide the rigor that we want to provide in our education in, in Shelton. Um, students are still going to take the assessments that has not gone away. That is going to be the preferred way that we would like students to graduate. So, uh, when the legislature first passes, everybody thought the assessments were going away. They're not going to go away, we're still tied to assessments because of federal funding. Um, and so we'll continue to take those. So I'll jump right in here. So the first one is a pathway for a student to graduate would be the ASVAB. Um, the ASVAB is a military entrance exam. Um, the low score, the minimum score they would have to pass would be a 31. Um, each military branch evaluates and sets, um, their benchmark for a minimum score. Um, the school district is responsible for a couple of things though, when a student takes the ASVAB. Um, school district must inform the students about the minimum AFQT, which is the Armed Forces Qualification Test, um, requirement for each branch of the military. And the Army and the Marines are at 31 right now, the Navy is at 35, the Air Force is at 36 and the Coast Guard is at 40. So those are all minimum scores that a student would have to pass, uh, the test with. We also have to let them know the eligibility requirements of this, uh, specific, uh, military occupations is listed in the State Board of Education website or through the ASVAB Career Exploration, um, Program. We also have to let them know how their scores and personal information might be shared with the Department of Defense. And last, we have to let them know how to opt, um, out of sharing their scores with military recruiters. So just because they take this, um, ASVAB doesn't mean that they're going to be hit up by military recruiters. The second, uh, and probably one of the most, um, difficult ones to understand pathway is the CTE, uh, Core Sequence. And for a student to go that direction and that pathway, they must have 2.0 credits in a sequence of courses that is relevant to the post-secondary graduation goals. And it must be outlined in their high school and beyond plan. Uh, they also have to meet the following. It needs to lead to a state or nationally recognized certificate or a credential, or it must provide the student an opportunity to earn dual credit via, uh, course, um, in a sequence of courses. So that would be a dual credit through a particular college that we have an articulation with. It also, um, consists of a sequence progression of technically intensive and rigorous courses. It has to lead to workforce entry, a state or nationally approved apprenticeship or post-secondary education in a related field as per their high school and beyond plan. And all of these must exist in a single CTE program. So the courses has to exist in a, a single CTE program, which would be Skills Tech, Business Marketing, uh, Family Consumer Science. We have six different programs in the state. Um, if by chance, uh, the sequence courses spans more than one CTE program, it has to be approved by three entities. The local school board has to be approved by the CTE Advisory Committee, which for our district is South Town Council based out of Olympia. And we have to submit it to OSPI, uh, through a local graduation pathway form and OSPI has 45 days to respond to us on it. And then if they don't like what we have turned in, um, we can resubmit it and they have another 45 days to look it over and get it back to us. Once OSPI has approved these, uh, local sequences, uh, they may be implemented by other districts upon notifying OSP. So if we want to look at another districts, we have to, uh, match up our frameworks, our classes, our SIP codes, and then we can notify OSPI and let them know that we are going to take and utilize one of these. Um, what we are working on right now, uh, Dina, Bob and I have just started working on aligning all of our um, sequence courses that cross over programs to our academies at Shelton High School. This is that we'll have a couple of courses in one, uh, program area and then maybe a couple of courses in another. And, uh, what comes to mind would be maybe Skills Tech, maybe a student is taking welding one, two and three, but they also want to take a business and marketing class. So we'll have to get that approved through OSPI, um, and, and, uh, through the school board. And the student would have to be able to let us know that, that they plan on opening up a welding shop or a business of that sort. For choice and Cedar, we are still looking at various pathways, um, for them. So that's going to be, um, something that we'll work on with Stacy and Amber, um, when it comes to that. Uh, number three, the third pathway would be a college admission exam, uh, scores for ELA and/or math. And these exams would be the SAT, the SAT with the essay, the AT, ACT or the ACT with writing. Either one of those can be used. And the current scores for the SAT with the essay would be for the math portion, 430, for ELA would be 410. The ACT with writing would be math 16 and ELA, uh, would be a score of 14 minimum to be able to utilize, uh, that pathway. Our fourth pathway is a combination of graduation pathways in ELA and/or math. And students can meet this grad pathway, with the combination of at least one math and one ELA as described in pathway three, which, um, I just went over with you, the entrance exams or in the upcoming, um, pathways five through eight that I am going to go over here shortly. Uh, number five is dual credit courses for ELA and/or math. Um, dual credit courses must have a potential to earn college credit in a 100 level or above college class. Eligible courses must be offered in APCI IB, which is Advanced Placement, Cambridge and International. which is Advanced Placement, Cambridge International or International Baccalaureate. It could also be through CTE dual credit, which would be an articulation through a college. College and the high school, which we currently do not offer at Shelton. Running Start, which we do offer and/or any other state-approved dual credit programs. And at this time, we don't have any, but I'm sure they're looking at other dual credit programs for the state. For the AP, CI, or IB courses, a student has to earn at least one high school credit. And they have to have a C plus or higher each term to earn that credit and to be able to qualify. For college and the high school, CTE dual credit, Running Start, the student has to earn a one point zero high school credit and be eligible to earn college credit at one hundred level or higher class that they're taking. Meeting this criteria that is established by the local school district and the Institute of Higher Learning combined. For Shelton students, our kids that want to utilize dual credit and get the college credit and work towards that pathway, they must pass the class with a B or better to qualify. It also must be an articulated class with the college when it comes to CTE classes. Our frameworks also have to cover a minimum of eighty percent of the college class framework. So we have to work very closely with colleges when it comes to articulations and matching frameworks. We sign frameworks every year. They're reviewed every year. So it's quite a job to do that. We are always looking to increase our framework potential. Number six would be dual credit exam scores for ELA and/or math. Scoring a three or higher on one of the approved AP exams, scoring a four or higher on one of the approved IB exams or scoring an E or better on the approved advanced or advanced subsidiary CI exams. Advanced Placement, Cambridge International and International Baccalaureate. So that would be a very difficult task for a student to do, but not impossible. Number seven, statewide assessment scores in ELA and/or math. That's something that we've been doing all along. For ELA, they have to score a twenty-five forty-eight. And/or math, they have to score a twenty-five ninety-five on their state assessments. For any student that has a significant cognitive disability and who that qualify for an IEP, they score a little bit different. Their score would be one oh five for ELA and a one oh three for math. And then the last pathway that a student could utilize would be a high school transition course for ELA and/or math. And this would be the classes that we offer, such as our Bridge to College courses. Utilizing this, a successful completion for this grad pathway is defined as passing the course and earning at least one high school credit throughout the duration of the entire school year. And based on the student's final grade, allows a student to be placed directly into a credit-bearing college-level course in a participating college. So if they're going to utilize Bridge to College course, such as Bridge to College Math, they have to pass the class and get one credit in it. And they also have to be able to qualify taking that college entrance exam into a high school level class, which would be or a college level class, which would be a one hundred or a greater level class. These are the eight pathways. I know I went over kind of fast. The big thing that we're really going to have to look at moving forward is tracking the students. It's going to be a huge job to be able to track all these students, making sure that no student falls through the cracks because there are different combinations we're going to have to look at that they can utilize to graduate. We don't want to make sure we don't have any student that gets overlooked. I know Bob Tronson has been looking at different avenues of tracking these students. So he's really been doing a lot of work on it, a lot of background work. Dean Alley and I have been talking a lot about how we're going to approach this and what's going to be best for Cedar High School, Choice High School, and Shelton High School. Shelton High School is going to be fairly easy because when Dina was looking at the pathways for the classes, we looked at grad pathways also. So Dina, do you want to chime in on any of this?
Thanks, Don. Yeah, I just, I want to piggyback off what you say and a couple of things. You know, we want students to be prepared for whatever they're going to do next. So obviously, if they pass the state assessments, that's an excellent start. If they're taking AP classes, which are always increasing at Shelton High School, has been doing a great job of increasing AP course offerings. That's also a great indicator that they're ready for post-secondary education. And as Don said, we did design, when we designed the academies, we looked at every pathway and we will make sure that every academy pathway meets that CTE two point oh credits. And so students will graduate with, you know, a start of college through CTE dual credit through AP. And they'll have industry-recognized credentials by the program that we have built at Shelton High School. And I know at Choice and at Cedar, we've been having conversations with them about what does it look like to do the same thing? One of the things that Don talked about was kind of that idea of a customized pathway. And that will be a great benefit to our students with IEPs who in their transition planning can really identify something that works best for them in their transition planning. And we have designed ways that we can build a custom pathway for them and that we can use this CTE two point oh credit pathway in order to help in those areas as well. So yes, I agree with Don that a hundred percent graduation is on the horizon.
And that is it? Does anybody have any questions?
Well, thank you both for that information. Board members, do you have questions or comments?
Sounds like a lot of work, but it sounds really exciting.
The farther we get into it, the more exciting it is because we see that it's taken care of a lot of equity issues that I feel we've had in the past.
Absolutely. Yes. I mean, so many different ways of learning. And now finally, maybe we're making headway there in matching up what each and every student in our district needs.
Absolutely.
All of your work on this and keeping that momentum going and looking into all these different ways. It's going to make a world of difference to our kids.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Oh, sorry. I had a quick question. And I apologize. I've got to turn my camera off because I'm having intermittent internet issues. But when you were talking about this, I would imagine too that part of that tracking process or helping students better understand what pathway they might be in would also tie in with their counselors there at the schools.
Absolutely. Teachers are going to really have to be in tune with this. Just for the reasons as I said, so we don't have any kids that get overlooked in this. And that's going to be a chore. There's definitely going to be a lot of work involved in it.
Yeah, yeah. And it is exciting. It's definitely exciting to have these different pathways and different ways of meeting those graduation requirements. So I look forward to hearing more about how this all, how this all goes forward.
Absolutely. And Dina asked me a question the other day about ALA, such as Choice of how are we going to be able to work with them and what are we going to be able to do? And we threw some ideas around. And I did do a little bit of checking and we are going to be able to utilize some ALA classes and some CTE classes to create some pathways for the students at Choice. So I'm pretty excited about that.
That's great. Thank you, Carrie. I've also had to turn off my video for a little bit of difficulties there. Anybody else with questions or comments?
Alex, mute.
You're on, you're muted.
Thank you, Sandy. I just want to mention that Don and Dina have put in a tremendous amount of time and effort to bring us to this point. This is tedious work and there, I know there's more work to be done. But they've launched this very important segment of our program in the Shelton School District. And I truly believe it's going to make a difference and it's going to get us to where we want to be with all of our students. So there's more work to be done, of course, but Don and Dina have done a great job up to this point. And thank you very much.
And I could say ditto. Very good. It's always fun to watch Don and Dina's faces. They just get so enthused when they talk about these academies and the pathways. And so while there may be a lot of work to go, they might not always consider it work, I think. I think they're enjoying it too.
No doubt.
Any other comments or questions? Alrighty. Thank you again for your presentation. And we will move on to the Back to School Parents Survey, item four point oh four. I think Katie will present.
Yes, good evening. So I'll be presenting about the survey results we received back. We sent out a survey on October first, planning for the in-person instruction. We had the survey open until October fifth at midnight. It was sent out online in English and Spanish. And we also had paper surveys available at our food distribution sites. The survey was touching base with families. We wanted to know what families' feelings were about moving into Stage B of our reopening of schools plan. Just a reminder, Stage B is an online plus in-person model, which would have students coming to school on Mondays and Tuesdays or Thursdays and Fridays and have Wednesdays as online learning days. We had a total of fourteen hundred and seventy respondents, which is our highest response rate to date, which is awesome. So I'm going to share my screen with you and I will show you the results of our survey. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes, we can see that. Thanks.
Okay, awesome. So the first question was just asking where your students go to school at. So we had thirty-two respondents at the Early Learning Center, two hundred and thirty-four at Bordeaux, a hundred and ten at Evergreen, two hundred and fifty-three at Mountain View, three hundred and four at Olympic Middle School, three hundred and twenty-four from Oakland Bay, thirty-three from Choice, forty-one from Cedar, and seven hundred and fifty-seven from Shelton High School. We did ask for personal information, which I did not include in this presentation. So that's why we're jumping to number, question number six here. So question six was, as we prepare to roll into Stage B, do you plan to send your children to school for in-person instruction? We had sixty-four, almost sixty-five percent of respondents say yes. About sixteen percent said no, and a little over nineteen percent are still unsure. So our next question is, we are providing the option for families to commit to one hundred percent online instruction for the remaining of the school year. If you wish for your children to remain one hundred percent online for the remainder of the school year, the schools will be sending out information. And so for our planning purposes, do you plan to commit to one hundred percent online for the remainder of the school year? We had seventy-four percent of respondents say no, that they plan to follow the school district stages. And we had almost twenty-six percent say yes, they would like to commit to online instruction for the remainder of the school year. And we also included in that question how many children they plan to commit to online instruction. And that total was roughly four hundred and twenty students that would like to remain online. So those are the results we have for now. And we'll be using this to plan for reopening into Stage B when that time comes. Are there any questions?
Well, I'm seeing that we had about seventy-seven respondents on the Spanish language survey. How are we feeling about the level of response on that? And do we, are we considering other ways that we can reach that particular population of families to make sure that we're getting that information out and that we're getting the information we need from our Spanish-speaking families?
Right. Yes, we have. This was our highest response for Spanish, our Spanish-speaking survey to date before. We've only had about fifteen to twenty respondents. So this was a greater response. Reaching out as many ways as we can. We've even had, Betty's been helping with Row, our school bus and getting to families that way. We're trying everything possible. Word of mouth is key here. So we got to keep working on that. Yes, we're open to ideas.
It's pretty impressive, the level of response that we had, considering it was only open for about five days. So, I mean, we gave a limited timeframe and to have this many people respond total and also in the Spanish language community, that's, it's definitely, I'm impressed with the level of response, so.
I think with the more surveys we send out too, the more that families will be involved. Clearly, every survey we've sent has gained more and more respondents. So I think the more we do it, the better response rate we're going to get to.
People will realize that they have to respond sooner, quicker. And as soon as they hear about it and not figure, oh, they've got a couple of weeks, they'll learn that they have to do it, respond as soon as they hear about it. So I thought it was interesting, the question number, the response on question number seven between the English and the Spanish versions. When they were, when people were answering this question, did they have an idea what the online instruction would be? Would it continue to be K-12? Or would it be the other platform that they could sign up for before school started, you know, online? I'm just wondering, were they gauging this based on their experience with K-12?
Right. That was the intent of the survey. I can't tell you what they were thinking, but that was the intent, but maybe we should have been more clear on that.
Okay.
All right. And this is Carrie. I'm just wondering if, you know, as we get closer to, you know, maybe tightening up the numbers on this. You know, if it's, I understand the survey and having people respond to that. But is it, I don't know if this is already happening in the schools, but our schools and at the teacher level, like when conferences come up or something like that, can they touch base with families individually to gauge where their comfort level is on that? And the reason why I ask that is, again, in these statewide school board calls that I listened to, the Peninsula School District specifically said that they did a survey of their families because they have brought back, I think it's K and first grade, maybe second grade. I want to say it's just kindergarten and first grade, but they had, you know, fifty-eight percent of families said that they would return for in-person instruction. And so the school district planned for that. But then on the day of coming back to school, they ended up having over seventy percent show up. And they were not prepared with staff and classrooms for the spacing that they needed. So, you know, I'm just wondering, you know, this is great that we have this much of a response, but maybe where we have some of these gaps, if there are other ways, like these other interventions of reaching out to families and finding out on an individual basis, you know, where that comfort level is so that we know what supports we need in the school and how to prepare for that.
Yeah, no, I think you did.
As we move down the road, Carrie, on the pandemic, I think that's going to give parents the confidence or no confidence to return their kids to school. The pandemic is going to dictate how parents are feeling about sending their kids to school, obviously. So that's why we're monitoring the pandemic very closely. And we need to keep pumping out the information as we find out where that pandemic is, week to week, month to month. And, and because that will impact, of course, how parents feel about sending their kids to school. So that pandemic is, is the key in where it goes.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right. We'll say thank you for this information, Katie, and for having the survey and the information. And we know that data will change every week. You know, if you do this survey next week, I'm sure you'll have different answers than, than different percentages than we see today. So we know it's an ongoing process. And like Carrie mentioned, there are lots of districts that, I won't say lots of districts, there are districts that are bringing grades back and finding that they're receiving a different number than what they were planning for. So we'll have to just keep that in mind. So thank you again. With that being said, that concludes the reports and recognitions. And we can move on to the consent agenda. Members of the board had a chance to review the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for April 13th, 2020.
I'll second that. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda passes, and I would just take note of the Drake scholarships that are paid out in there. It's great to see the scholar, the Drake scholars using their scholarships. So we appreciate that. All right, moving on to discussion and action items. We have a proposed draft policy in regards to the Shelton Academies, and there's a discussion on that. I see Deena on screen.
I am, I'm back. Thank you so much. So in your board packet, you have the first reading of a proposed policy on the Shelton Academies. And the reason we're bringing this forward is this school board and this community have really invested themselves in this academy project, in this academy idea. And we know that school boards change and leadership changes. And this is an opportunity for you as a school board to show that we have a clear direction and we have a clear focus, and we don't want that to just be a flash in the pan. Our community has invested themselves, their time, their money in this project, and they fully believe now that we are far enough along that we mean what we say when we say we are going to create Shelton Academies. And so we want that to be known. Now, yes, policies can always be changed, but this is a chance to make sure that nothing ever happens to this without significant discussion and significant input. And it really is a testament to the work and the guidance that you as a school board and Dr. Apostle have given us, and that the community has backed. And so that's why we're asking you to consider putting this into policy so that we can show this is how we plan on students being college and career-ready to be successful in whatever next steps they want to take in life. So we're happy to answer questions. I know Dr. Apostle has some words on this as well.
Yes. Thank you, Deena. Well-stated. We have put a tremendous amount of effort in developing academies, and we have a long way to go, because we want this to be K-12, a K-12 academy concept. But with the Met Academy and a few other things that are happening with a new high school and a property that's going to be donated to the school district, we're going to be developing additional pathways and academies for our students. And so we felt that it would be very important to really put a stamp on, on the fact that we've put so much time and effort on developing this philosophy of creating academies that will take students far and wide after graduation. So without a policy, without board support, as we all know, nothing happens and nothing, and things are liable to change. So we encourage the board to really take a good, hard look at this policy and support it.
Thank you very much for that. Questions and comments from the board? I know that we have talked on the board many times about, you know, laying a foundation for continuity from one board to the next, realizing that there will be turnover, we're not here for life. And this fits in with that plan of laying groundwork for continuing efforts like this. So Sally Carr?
So, policy looks great. Has this been something that has, our attorney has had a chance to take a look at?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, so first step, we're taking a look at it, and then this will be something that'll be sent along before we do final approval or after final approval.
We will send it to Lance and then back to you again for your review.
Perfect, thank you.
You know, I just, if I could add just one thing. In my experience, having served as an assistant superintendent and serving under five different superintendents and many different board members, there's nothing worse than a new board coming into a district or a new superintendent, and all of a sudden, they're taking the district in a different direction. I was faced with that three times as an assistant superintendent. And going out to staff and trying to encourage them to go a new direction after they put forth so much effort, I'm telling you, there's nothing worse. And it puts a district behind light years, because people will not buy in. They'll say, is this the flavor of the month? And they just will not participate. It's, it's very difficult. It's a very difficult situation, and that's why it's important. We've laid a foundation, and we, it's successful, and it's gonna get more successful as time goes on. But I think politicizing.
Thank Alex froze on us.
We'll give him a minute, see if he comes back.
And while we're waiting for him to come back, I would just, to what he is saying, you know, that applies to our community as well. This is something that we have worked very hard to plan with our community members, and we don't want to suddenly have someone turn the ship in a different direction when we have a very clear direction. You have given us clear direction, and our community now believes that direction.
I suppose maybe one question I might have.
Yes.
You know, at the moment, we have the academies onsite, on campus. And I wonder, should there be any mention in the policy that, you know, guarantees it could be onsite or it could be offsite?
So we, yeah, and the reason that we didn't, the reason that we were very generic is because we do have three high schools. We want to plan for how this might look at any of the three high schools. We also, in the back of our mind, we're not ready to come to you yet, but we have another idea in the back of our mind with one of our community partners and one of our college partners that would, in fact, not be on the campus of any of our high schools. So the, we can certainly put verbiage in, but we felt that we left it plain enough that it could be located anywhere.
Yeah, because we don't wanna shortchange ourselves on any of the options.
Absolutely.
You know, going forward, so. Questions or comments? From other board members? Has Alex come back in yet?
I think that might have been his cell phone, because I asked Bob to call him and check in with him, so. Hearing that, so.
That was Bob McMath.
There we are.
Checking on me. He protects me, folks, from doing harm.
Welcome back. We'll let you resume your thoughts. While you were gone, I had just asked Deena about, you know, there's no mention on here.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that, Sandy.
Very good. Alrighty, so go, feel free to add your thoughts.
Dr. Apostle, I shut down your video because you froze, so I didn't know if you were having bandwidth issues. So your microphone is active, but your camera is not. And now your microphone is also muted.
How about now?
We can hear you.
You can hear me. All right, good.
If you've got something, do you want to add? We're, we're listening.
No, I, I, I think Deena has stated it very well, and I know that the board understands the concept here. And no, I don't have anything to add. Thank you, Sandy.
Alrighty, thank you. Now, this is just a discussion item?
Yes.
And there's no board action?
Not at this time, no.
So at this point, then, staff will develop the policy and send it off to Lance? And then we'll come back to us for our first reading?
Yes.
Sometime in the, down the road?
Well, we're gonna try to be as speedy as we can be.
Okay. Alrighty, any other comments or questions from board members? I see none, so thank you, Deena, for presenting that to us, and everybody for their comments. And as always, thank everybody for their work on the academies. We can move on now to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Sandy. Just a few quick notes. I sent a notice along with a letter from Dr. Stein from the Mason County Health Department to parents, staff, and community on the issue of COVID-19. And basically, Dr. Stein indicated that we would have a two-week pause in terms of bringing or thinking about bringing students back to school. He's being very cautious, as well as myself. We're very cautious about when that day will come, when we will actually start bringing our students back to school. I'm continuing to work closely with the schools to provide as much support as possible in these very difficult and challenging times. For the past two weeks, I have been in the process of meeting with each school staff through Zoom, having a conversation about any concerns they might have regarding our instructional, instructional package, and also discussing how we'll, how we will reopen our schools. The staff presented many good ideas, and the conversation was very positive. It was very professional, very respectful. They did an outstanding job. I'm not finished with all the schools yet, but the schools that I've visited, it's been a great experience. The end result of these meetings will be to report back to staff the areas that will, that they feel need to be improved. And we will also share the results of this effort with our parents and community, and of course, with our school board. I have schools left to visit this week. I'm, I'm very thankful to my secretary, Allison Nutt, who is taking excellent notes at each meeting. And these notes will be the basis of our end product. Overall, this is a process of monitoring and possibly adjusting, if necessary, our system, like a good teacher who monitors and adjusts their classroom. I'm, I'm hearing good things about K-12, but I'm also hearing some concerns. But in the final analysis, what we want to do is do the very best for our students and make sure that they're gonna be successful. So these meetings have been very important to me and to my cabinet, because it's going to be the basis for possibly making a few changes, but all in the effort to make sure we're doing the very best for our students and our families. That's all I have. Oh, I do have one more thing. October is the month to celebrate our building administrators. And as you've witnessed this evening, we have some great ones, and they're doing a great job throughout the system. And if you can think about it and send them a little note, appreciating their efforts, that would be wonderful. But they're doing a terrific job, and I'm very proud of all of them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks for sharing that note about October. At this point in time, we can turn to community comments. Again, if there's someone listening that would like to comment, you can raise your hand and let our host know. When you raise your hand by pressing star nine, and this is the community comment time to do that.
Currently, we have nobody that's dialed in by phone.
Oh, okay, very good. Very good. Then we're gonna assume we have no community comments and move on to board member comments. Who would like to go first?
I'll go first. I don't have much, because amazingly enough, I haven't been anywhere to have anything to report on. I did want to just take a moment to recognize National Hispanic American Heritage Month, which wraps up here in the middle of this week. It was September 15th to October 15th. We have a very wonderful and supportive and proud Hispanic and Latinx community in Shelton, and we appreciate all of them and the support that they give to our school district. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Sally. Next up?
I can jump in, and I will piggyback a little bit on what Sally Carr just mentioned and just highlight that one of our school district personnel, Ricardo Del Bosque, who we all know has been in the hospital now for a while. His supporters do have a GoFundMe page. So if anybody is inclined to donate to some of the medical expenses that have been incurring, you can find that on Facebook or ask somebody within the school district, because there's many people that know where that is, or potentially how to donate something through other means other than GoFundMe. And other than that, I just want to say thank you to everybody for your continued hard work during this very challenging time.
Thank you, Carrie, and thank you for sharing that information. Sally Brownfield?
Just thank everybody for all the information tonight, bringing us up to date, as well as all those in our community that are working together to, to help us through these times. I know there's a lot. I have been involved with some of the, the Mason County meetings. And, you know, school is one thing, but there's so many other things in our community with shelter insecurity and food insecurity and things that are happening. And so just the great work that our whole community is doing to support one another in these times. This, it is, is, it's really great to be in a, a community like this. And, you know, I think we're gonna be in it a while. And so we just need to keep that up. And I was glad to hear and would encourage us to continue to pay close attention to the social, emotional well-being of not close attention to the social emotional wellbeing of not just our children, our families and all of our staff as well. So we're very fortunate, unfortunate with, I mean, I have branches following, falling on my roof as we're doing this. And Moses Lake got hit by a freakish thing and the elementary school lost their whole roof today. So. Count our blessings and, and always, you know, think about, think about others, whether they're nearby or across our country, as there's so many different storms that are happening all over. And, you know, hopefully the fires are going to get taken care of in California. But there's, there's so many. And I've been doing some work with the Evergreen State College. And I too would like to, there's a survey that they have out there looking for a new president. So in some of our work, I'm on a search committee over there for the president. So, um, as we're looking at these academies and different things, what is it that, and how is it that we can also partner not only with our community colleges, but also our, our other higher education institutes? You know, to, to support our, our kids being successful all the way through. And, you know, it always just enhances our whole community. So other than that, yeah, Sally, I'm like you, I haven't been very far. I started a new job. And, but, uh, so there's lots of challenges there, but just wishing everyone well.
And I will finish up with just a couple of housekeeping things. The WASDA regional meeting, they are combining regions four, five and six. Typically, we're just region five, but they're going to come.
I have public comment.
And that will be on Monday, October 19th. And where I think we should all be registered for the annual conference next month for WASDA as well. I do believe we have a community member with a raised hand. Will the board allow community comment at this time?
Madam President, if I may, because of the time delay between the stream that we are on and the stream that shows up in YouTube, the individual calling in may have tried to call in at the start of the community comments period when it showed up on YouTube and he didn't manage to make it. So.
All right. Understandable. Community member, you have, you have the floor. Thank you for calling in and we appreciate your, your time.
Hi, yeah. Can you hear me speaking?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm, I'm calling just again with concerns about where the curriculum is going. My name is Tom St. Clair.
Thank you. That's what I was asking. Go ahead.
And I have a kid in, in Evergreen in the, in a kindergarten. I was very excited for him to go to kindergarten there so he could continue to improve his Spanish skills. With the dual language program just being an amazing resource for our kid and the community. But I'm just got some concerns I'd like to bring up again and keep pressing forward with this. It was at a, the address of a variety of issues you guys keep bringing up. One of them being equity and another being just making sure that kids are graduating with the skills that they need, which seems to be major pushes from Shelton in terms of what they want to accomplish. So anyways, the first thing I would say in equity, just looking at the K, the boxes that showed up in our mail, there's a ton of stuff that showed up. A lot of it was usable, but there was a lot of junk that just showed up that was not something I think we'll ever use. And I'm not sure how much was paid for that, but a lot of stuff that we're still sorting out how to be able to use it. And I will give kudos to our teachers, Ms. Crabtree and Ms. Eels, because they're trying to make it work, but they don't even have the box themselves. They don't really know what's in there. We did get an anthology for kindergarten of stories, which were actually kind of above kindergarten level. But it was all Eurocentric stories, absolutely nothing for any people of color. So I'm not sure how that addresses equity, but it was all basically European stories like Hansel and Gretel. And the amount of stuff that's out there right now that is available with people of color, with stories of Native Americans, especially after Indigenous Peoples' Day this week, with African Americans that have contributed, with women, there's just a ton of stuff out there. And it's sad to see that the K-12 stuff really didn't bring that up. The other thing I'm concerned about with equity, with my own kid and with other kids, is the lack of science. Okay? I myself am a science teacher. I know that when kids show up to my classroom with years of some underlying science instruction from well-trained teachers, they're going to be ready to go and they're going to be ready for that next level of science after me and are going to have a ton of opportunities. But right now with your teachers being told not to teach science and being told to just focus on language arts and math, that's not, that's not going to work long-term for Shelton's kids. It's going to not increase their graduation rate. It's, it's going to decrease the directions that they're going to want to go because they're not going to be aware of, of the excitement and wonder that's out there in all the science fields that are, that are so embedded in our understanding of how society and how our world works these days. And, and just to back that up with some evidence and some laws is the Basic Education Act, the RCW for the state on common school curriculum says that science needs to be a part of the curriculum, including science with a special reference to the environment. So without science being taught, I'm not sure that you're going to accomplish your goals of increasing equity. That's going to put Shelton kids behind other districts and neighboring areas. And, and PE and other things too. And it's going to put kids behind. And it's, it, you know, science teachers know that we teach everything. We don't just teach, we don't just teach science. We teach language arts. We teach math. We teach all of that together, embedded in a relevant context. So I hope you guys will reconsider your approach with your teachers and get your teachers on board with teaching science even during this challenge we have with the pandemic. So thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you very much for your call and for taking the time and for hanging with us.
Yeah, it's been a long night again.
Thank you. Host, are there any other community comments that have arrived?
There was an email that was just sent by Jennifer Eisenberg Plute. I would like to thank Alex for.
Respond to emails via email?
Yes, ma'am. I will forward it to, I will forward it to you as soon as the meeting is over.
Alrighty. I thank you very much. Any other raised hands? Okay. Thank you so very much. Let's see. I think at this point in time, we are ready to move on to item 10, which is an exempt session. And with that, how will this work, host? We have, do we enter into some other format or do we wait for, well, people can't just drop off because they come back after the executive session if they so choose. We have an exempt session this evening and we have an executive session. And the exempt session discussion, possible action?
I am at the board's discretion as to how you wish to do this.
Have to set up a separate meeting to go.
Yeah. Can we receive a Zoom link to a meeting for the exempt session? And then presumably we'll need another one for the executive session?
Bob, we could do a breakout room instead.
That's what I was going to suggest.
We'll break out and come back to the main session where we want to take action.
Do you want to mention?
Do you want me to do?
What's that?
I asked Bob if he wants me to do it for.
I am at the board's and I am at the discretion of the board's will.
And I'm at a disadvantage here. I've not done a breakout session. So. Since Brenda has some knowledge, did you indicate some knowledge, Sally Carr? A breakout session?
Teeny tiny knowledge, so I will defer to Brenda.
We've been meeting them in negotiations daily, so.
Alrighty. We'll leave it. We'll let Brenda take us into a breakout room then, I suppose.
So Bob, I will need to be co-host or something so I can do that.
Okay, um, how many people are going to be joining you? Because basically to make you co-host at this particular point, I think I need to assign you the host duties as I leave.
Okay, so it will be the board, Alex and I.
Okay.
I believe Alex, is that correct?
I lost, no HR?
Terry doesn't have any power, so I'm going to be doing the explanations this evening for him.
Okay. Alrighty. Thank you. Brenda, you'll be able to set us up then in the, for item 11, the executive session then as well?
I'm, Alex, you're muted. We, I need to ask you a question about that because I have communication from Lance.
Yes, I did too.
Okay.
And we're going to postpone and reschedule the grievance hearing.
The WA representative and Terry, neither one have power tonight.
Right. So we can't, we can't go forward with that. It'll be rescheduled.
Okay.
So we just have the, the exempt session. That's it.
Okay.
And who is involved in the exempt session?
The board, Brenda and myself.
Okay. All other people, please sign out.
I think we have one person, now we have.
Still have a couple.
We still have a couple, Mario and Kelly. There she's gone.
I just, unfortunately, I just terminated her. So we have Alex, Brenda, Sandy, Terry.
Okay.
Yes, I'm the Terminator. All right. So I think.
And we'll need to stop the live stream for the exempt session as well.
I'm going to do that. I am going to do that right now.
Thank you, Sally.
Livestream has been ended.